Well, you might.
Their motion to reconvene in open session.
Move to reconvene.
Their motion to reconvene is our second.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none, motion carries. We are now reconvening in session. Close session announcements.
In closed session, the board unanimously expelled a student in confidential report 2025.2 for one year. In addition, the board with trustee No recusing himself voted to suspend expulsion of student in confidential report 2025.3 through the end of the first semester of 2025-26 school year. The board also unanimously agreed to take no action on closed session item E. Last but not least, the board of trustee unanimously approved the superintendent's recommendation to hire Jackie Vo Feldinger as a certificated manager for the position of elementary director of education effective July 1st, 2025. Congratulations.
That concludes.
Thank you. I have a request to pull item and consent item CII from consent. Their motion to.
Make a motion to approve, make a motion to approve pulling of that item.
We have the motion to accept, we have a motion to approve the pulling of the items are second.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none, motion carries. The item will be pulled from consent. Item 12, flag salute.
Yes.
Good evening.
It was on.
It's on.
Yeah.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Cadet Perea Austin Mendoza, and I am here on the behalf of the Mill Piers High School NJROTC program. Accompanying me this evening is our color guard team. Commanded today is Cadet Perea Austin Garcia. Alongside him are his riflesmen, Cadet Gary and Cadet Nguyen Bill. And as far as Navy flag, we have Cadet Sinoi. Additionally, from the NJROTC program, standing to my right, we have cadets Dwan, Tran Kay, Soto, Finiliar, Trung, Mendoza J, Khan F, Chen L, Nguyen Ben, T, Gonzalez, Liu, Lin, Koshi, and from the eighth grade piloting program, coming from Thomas Russell, we have Cadet Zuzart. At this moment, I would like everyone to please rise and remove all hats and hoods and join me for the flag salute.
Color guard, ready?
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone. Y'all may be seated.
If you don't mind, can we give our color guard a round of applause? And can we give our high school NJROTC a round of applause? Thank you, and now we'll go directly into the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Norwood. We're going to start tonight with some recognitions. First, we know that on this side of town, we experienced a power outage for a great deal of the afternoons and early evening. And I want to give a special thanks to our maintenance operations team, tech team, student nutrition team, all of the staff at the schools. But it's in planning with Plan B, Plan C, and in the event that we need a Plan Z that they made sure that we were able to have our board meeting. This is an example. I went into the bathroom and every stall had a flashlight just in case we didn't have power tonight. So it's that kind of detail that makes things work. Thank you, team. I would like to invite our Mill Peters High School Academy of Travel and Tourism students and also their lead, Ms. Trisha Brownstein. And they're going to tell us about two of their two of their projects that they did. Travel and tourism, Ms. Brownstein? Cadet, would you mind asking them to come in? Thank you, Principal Wallman. Yep.
They're going to do a presentation. This is a presentation, right? You guys can, yeah, just put this. Yeah, we'll hold them. Yeah, go, go, go. Just, just bring them up here. Come on, just bring them up.
Open display them.
You need a hire? Yeah, there you go.
That's my daughter. Sounds good. Thank you.
And if we need, we'll hold them.
All right, we'll come around so we can see them.
Guys, hello, everyone. My name is Monica.
My name is Quinn.
And my name is Jovia.
Okay, this is our business. It is called Rococo Rose. It is a tea room that offers an immersive dress of experience inspired by Rococo era fashion. Our target market is for anyone who is willing to try new experiences, predominantly for ages between 18 to 30, but we are not limited to that. And although a majority of our audience is for women, we do have a wide selection and we welcome people from all gender identities.
Right, so our mission is to create a whimsical haven where timeless elegance meets sustainability. We aim to enrich lives while also having a positive impact on the world. Now, on that note, ooh. Our business's ultimate goal is to not only effectively implement sustainability measures into our policies and everyday operations, but also to strengthen the community bond as well as provide an experience that can be captured and remembered. Now, when it comes to corporate social responsibility for the environmental aspect, we'll be installing floor-to-ceiling windows as well as energy and water efficient systems. In addition to that, our clothing will be sourced from reputable secondhand suppliers and there will be company-wide education on the topic of sustainability itself. And then for the social aspect, any excess food will be donated to nearby charities and organizations. We will also be sourcing a few of our sweet treats and ingredients from local businesses as well. And to top it all off, the incorporation of Asian flavors as well as specialties serves as a way to not only raise awareness, but also to preserve the culture.
So who here likes a sweet treat? So this is going to be hard to demonstrate because not everybody can see the board clearly. However, I'll explain the layout, how things work in our establishment. And I don't know if it'll be possible, but I was hoping to hand out the menus as well just to show you. So at Rococo Rose, it's going to be a establishment where there's two entrances. So if you would just like to be a part of the immersive tea room experience, you can enter in a separate entrance. And if you would like to have that makeover experience, we offer two separate menus. One's a stylish package menu and then one is a normal average restaurant menu. But yeah, if you guys could pass that around, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you guys so much. We'll move on to the next group.
We're seniors in the Academy of Travel and Tourism at Mill Peters High.
Hi, I'm Isabella and I'm a senior, a part of the Academy of Travel and Tourism along with my partner.
Hello, I'm Nicole Siguritan.
And our business is called Bean and Blossom Cafe. It is a business where we strive for zero waste, to be honest. We use, we reduce, and recycle everything from food scraps goes back into our own garden grown resources like herbs, strawberries, and stuff like that we can grow on ourselves. So there's that.
So our target market is college students and will be placed in San Jose where it's near a college. So we have a place where basically the students have a place to study and relax and enjoy sustainability.
Our layout is more focused on, we want to have roof access, but we do understand that it's really hard to get a rooftop access in place. But we just want a separate space so we can do our own gardening and stuff like that. And it's pretty much just a layout of kitchen and the counter. And then we also have a produce display too, just in case people don't want sweet treats or anything like that. And they just want like some like strawberries to take home to make their own like yogurt or stuff like that because we are mainly focusing on college students. So sometimes they don't have money to spend on sweet treats, but they want something healthy.
So our mission statement is brewing a greener tomorrow, one cup at a time. Onto the next group.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jocelyn.
My name is Bella.
And we are juniors in the Academy of Travel and Tourism. So welcome aboard to Sweetener Cruise, a health and fitness cruise located in the heart of Miami, Florida. That is opening this summer.
All right, so this is our press release at the very top. It's basically an overview about what our goal is and what we're about and what you might find when you come aboard. And includes the fact that we have some superfoods and some sound therapy and custom beauty sessions. This is our proposal right here, which is, which basically dives deeper into our experience and what we have to offer and how we really want to make you guys or our members feel like their best and healthiest selves. And this is our flyer right here. There will be physical and online copies of it. It includes like a little short and sweet couple of sentences about what you might find on opening day and it has our opening date, which is Saturday, June 7th. And we do have a deal where everyone that comes in on opening day will get 50% off their membership for the next two months. And if you're reading our menu right now, that is some of our options that we provide at our Superfoods Cafe, which are vegan, plant-based, and gluten-free. So those are just some of our superfood options with smoothies and solubles. And yeah.
All right, the Sweetener Cruise offers a luxurious, one-of-a-kind floating experience in Miami Beach, allowing guests in themes of the aesthetics of Ariana Grande iconic albums. Our mission is to blend wellness, music, adventures by offering an unforgettable trip through Ariana's eras. We aim to provide a unique fitness and health experience for 18 and over, creating an appealing setting that encourages relaxation, fun, and connection with music. So some of some, some things about Ariana Grande is that she was born and raised in Florida. She is known for being an American singer and actress. Some fun facts were some that she focuses on health and fitness and she announced that she was a vegan in 2013. We, we have a commercial, but we didn't bring. Yeah. There's going to be brochures passed out. That's just more in-depth about our Sweetener Cruise.
And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
I just wanted to give you a quick overview of what they were asked to do. So for the seniors, they're in the advanced hospitality class and this is their third year in the academy. They, along with, I'm the hospitality teacher and along with our economics teacher, they were asked to create a sustainable business. So it was interdisciplinary project. And these ladies over here, if Ms. Shaw could come up, where's Ms. Shaw? She disappeared. She could tell us a little bit more. She's the hospitality teacher. And you want to tell them a little bit about the project real quick?
So this project specifically is for the juniors and it's their second year in the academy. So it's based off of hospitality marketing. So what these amazing ladies did was inspired by a celebrity of some sort. So they chose Ariana Grande and they have to build off an attraction based on that. So they did the Sweetener Cruise. Oh, yes, it is interdisciplinary with history because they had to do a biography with Ariana Grande and our lovely English teacher, Ms. Malcolm, did the press release with them. There we go.
So I guess the question would be, how many years has the Travel and Tourism Academy been doing these types of projects?
So I've been in the academy 10 years and we've been doing them since I've been there, but I know that they were happening before I got there. I can't say they were happening every year before I got there, but the academy's been around for 25 years. We just celebrated our 25th anniversary. So that's. And thank you for your support and thank you for honoring these ladies today. Yes.
High school student preparing for.
For me, I want to be a special effects artist and it is very important to know how to talk to people, especially in different environments. And just overall, being in hospitality helps you come out of your comfort zone in the best way possible. You meet a lot of new people, you meet a lot of people from different grades and you do a lot of like hospitality work for the academy because we have interviews that we help out with. And I'm also part of yearbook too, so I talk to many people every day. And being in hospitality helped me learn how to speak correctly, how to present myself correctly. And just overall made me a better person to stand up front and people and be confident in myself.
Thank you very much, Ms. Malcolm, Ms. Shaw, and Ms. Brownstein and students for sharing your extraordinary work this year. And I have to say, while the Travel and Tourism Academy has been around for 25 years, you and the team have really worked to elevate and make sure that it's relevant. And I really appreciate how you've done so by focusing on business development and also connections and community and culture and sustainability. So I'd like to recognize the three of you and all of our students.
Ms. Malcolm.
All right. Next, we would like to recognize one of our students who was chosen for her amazing student work in creating a winning statewide bookmark contest for the California Association of Science Education. And that goes to Grace Lu. If we could have Grace's family, dad. And do we have any staff members from Weller here? Online, all right. Would you like to tell us about your design? Could you tell us what inspired you to do this? It's okay. Dad, can you tell us a little bit about what Grace did for her bookmark?
Yeah, based on my memory, I think it's a beach and a solar panel and a windmill. Also the sun becomes, I think a duck, something.
Thank you. Grace, could you introduce your sister to us?
Sister. Amy. Amy.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Let's take a picture with you all. And I see Principal saying up there, Principal Elsie up there and I can't make out who that is. And Ms. Ms. Nystrom. Okay. Next, we have somebody who was recognized by the county for her support of foster and unhoused youth and going above and beyond. That is principal of Spangler Elementary. That is Principal of Spanglel Elementary, Ms. Parwinder Jalal. Would you tell us a little bit about what you do for our learners who are unhoused?
Good evening, Board, and good evening, everyone out there. Um, it's not just, um, I was amazed by this honor, but it's actually not my work. It's the work of our front office, Tanay Rayner and Allison Eekert, plus our collaboration with Nicole Stewart, our community liaison Claudia Navarrete and Henry Robinson. They really support us, and when we do get these families, we kind of look at a whole approach. What are their needs, not just here at school, but with transportation, uh, food, uh, mental health. So it's a whole child and whole family approach, and that has really worked for us. And of course, Julian Flores, our assistant, my assistant principal. But again, it's, it's a teamwork. Um, yeah, it's not me. I wish they could be here, but we have a long day tomorrow. So thank you for this recognition.
It's my husband. Yeah.
Thirty years.
We're very glad to have you, Mr. Jalal.
Okay. Not only is our badminton team the winner of the fourth straight Central Coast Section Championship with several outstanding pairs and singles, it also has one of my former students, Tommy Nguyen, as the coach. So I'm very excited. Mr. Coach Nguyen, could you come on up with the team and introduce um, your assistant coaches as well as tell us about our winners? Come on up, Coach Nguyen.
Okay, while everyone is getting adjusted, uh, I'm head coach Tommy. Um, I work for the school district. I actually work at the high school along with coaching there. Uh, my JV coach is Coach Johnny Ink. He's right there, kind of regulating everyone. And then this year, we also have Coach Emerald uh, joining us for her first time. Uh, this is our fourth year winning CCS as a team. Uh, we have a lot of players that did very well. Um, we have Anderson Lin who won boy singles for a third time a year. Uh, we have Nehal Kadamba, uh, these, these boys in that here. Uh, he's placed top three the last three years also. Um, yeah, it just requires a lot of teamwork and a lot of um, communication amongst the players, but uh, I'm really happy and proud of everyone. Um, they're doing a very good job. I think uh, winning this for a fourth time in a row is very challenging, but it's something we welcome. Yeah.
Thank you, Coach Tommy, and I'm very proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Coach, what's, what's the coach's name? Coach Tommy. The, the Mel Peters High School Badminton Program started in nineteen eighty-two. And I was on the team. And we were terrible. So for you guys to continue to build this program and win is a, is a testament to the resilience and having the right people in the right place and the right students to make this successful. But now, you know, we all have our expectations, and we are looking for number five. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a young man. I think you're a sophomore this year, Kavish Shaw, who uh, placed in the state for impromptu speaking. And I got to meet Kavish uh, in a Rotary Speech Club. And Kavish, in his speech for the Rotary Club, talked about how last year, he didn't really know what he was doing, but then he was mentored by one of the other students. And now look at him, taking center stage. You want to tell us a little bit about uh, speech?
Um, so speech and debate, like everyone in our school like only does debate, like debate is the main event at our school. So I think, me personally, debate is like a lot of work because you have to make a whole case. And I'm a lazy person, so I don't like doing debate. Whereas in like the event I do, it's impromptu, you have no prep, you just go in the room, they give you your topic there, and you just gotta start talking. And everyone knows me as a talker, so it was just a fun event for me to do.
Thank you.
Wait, Kavish. Want to have your mom up here, and do you have any other family? Okay, then we'll have our MHS team join us as well. Okay, we have from Curtner Elementary, Hour Two, Made in MUSD celebrities. We have from the front office, Ms. Kim Nguyen Trong. And from one of the back portables, unless you change your classroom, Mr. Andrew Topham. If we could have you come on up. Is Kim online? Okay. Well, while Mr. Forstner is pulling uh, Ms. Nguyen up on screen, would you like to say a few words, Principal Slaven?
I have a little short thank you speech, is that okay? I gathered some feedback from staff, colleagues, and students to kind of wove it together. Uh, Curtner, we are lucky to have a staff full of dedicated educators, and Andy Topham is part of that team, where his natural leadership abilities shine. Whether it's supporting instruction, coaching student athletes, or stepping up to problem-solve school-wide systems, Andy consistently demonstrates what it means to be an educator committed to equity, collaboration, and student success. He is a scheduling whiz, helping ensure our practices are fair and inclusive. And he leads with thoughtfulness, humor, and a genuine care for all students. At Curtner, our teachers go beyond the classroom to support our school community, and Andy truly embodies that. His colleagues describe him as welcoming, positive, and always ready to lend a hand. One teacher shared, if you have a great idea, Andy is the first to help make it happen. Others noted how his energy makes work enjoyable, saying, "Your energy and positivity make it, make work feel like a team effort, and your presence makes Curtner a more enjoyable place for both staff and students." Buddy classes, lunchroom chats, and spontaneous teamwork are all part of what makes him such a valued part of our campus culture. And of course, if you really want to understand Mr. Topham's impact, just ask the students. His students called him "the chillest teacher ever", "very organized and funny, patient and kind", and even gave him the coveted title of "true sigma". What stands out most, though, is that students from his class and beyond recognize how much he truly cares about fairness, kindness, and helping every student feel seen and supported. Whether he's coaching kickball, leading engaging lessons, or simply greeting students around campus, Andy has built a reputation as someone who uplifts those around him. Whether encouraging student voice or showing patience and humor in the classroom, Andy makes Curtner a better place for everyone. We're proud to celebrate Andy tonight, not just for what he does, but for how deeply he reflects the heart of MUSD. Congratulations. And our principal secretary, Kim Nguyen Trong, may be watching. Every great school has someone behind the scenes who keeps it all running, and for us, that person is Kim Nguyen Trong. As our principal secretary, Kim is the glue that holds the entire school together. She's deeply knowledgeable, highly organized, and supports every aspect of Curtner with calm, efficiency, and care. Her colleagues say it best, she's the backbone of our community. And Kim is always helpful and goes above and beyond for everyone. Whether it's keeping the office running during the busy parts of the day, or stepping in to support teachers with supplies, schedules, or last-minute needs, Kim brings a steady hand and warm presence to everything she does. One teacher shared, even when the office is buzzing, which is often, Kim takes time to check in and make sure you're okay. Another put it simply, there's not enough words to describe how much you mean to our Curtner community. Kim models what it means to lead with patience, professionalism, and heart, and we're so grateful for everything she brings to Curtner. And she represents the best of MUSD. Congratulations.
Mr. Topham?
I agree. Kim is wonderful and is the heart of our school.
Thank you, Mr. Topham. Here we have other Curtner team members who could join us. All right, at the end of the dais, we have three outstanding leaders. We have Elijah Sandoval from Middle College High School. Maricela Kabidia, we will give you yours next time we see you. And Mei Yi Cheng from Mel Peters High School. We wanted to make sure that you know how important you are to our governance team. You give perspective from the students. And as everybody always says, it really is not cliche, we're here because of you. And we really need you at that dais to make sure that we keep in front of us what our purpose is every single time we meet. So I thank each of you for taking the time away from school and away from family to be with us twice a month late into the night. Would either of you like to say anything?
Um, I wish Maricela was here with us today. Um, I hope she's having a good time. And I hope she has fun wherever she is after high school right now.
I also second that, and I'm also very grateful for the team. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elijah and Mei Yi.
President Narwin?
Tell us about your experience.
Um, I find this experience very, very rewarding. Um, I, I love being a part of a school and throughout my last two years of high school, uh, at the middle college, I've been given this experience by my principal and by the team, and I'm so thankful for it. It makes me um, learn how to speak to people and how to understand what goes on behind the scenes, and I really enjoy understanding all this and learning as I graduate soon. Thank you.
Um, it's a similar experience for me, especially because I do want to go into some sort of um, government or law position when I'm older, so this is like me dipping my foot a little bit into already that sort of world of government. Um, and I think it's really interesting to like, learn about what um, the sort of adults uh, really look at, because at the school level, I've always been involved with student government, and we care a lot about just like student participation and stuff. But you guys care about the financial side of things, the underrepresented people, um, like people who are unhoused and with disabilities and stuff, and I think um, that's a part that's, we talk about it, but it's not as uh, looked at as it is here. So I think that's really interesting. I look forward to working with you guys next year.
Well, no, thank you, student board reps, for your perspective. Um, what you get to see is how a good governance team is run. In your future careers, you're gonna run to governance teams or boards or things that, that are a little bit more challenging. And you have an example of how you can participate, how you can inject your voice, and how you can get progress going. So thank you both for being here, and hopefully you take a little bit away uh, from this governance team.
Thank you for everything that you bring, your insights, your fresh blood, your perspectives to the table for us to understand better and be able to guide you. And it's, it's a win-win. We all learn from each other, and uh, you know, your generation has amazing thought processes, which I always commend, and uh, I get to learn from you all. And Elijah, I, I think I'll see you at Duncan's. That's the favorite place. I see him every time I go there. Anyway, uh, and uh, yeah, the high schoolers, I can't wait to see uh, what the future unfolds for you, and I'm sure we'll cross paths and we'll wait up here for you guys to come back and join us and lead the show. Thank you so much. Congratulations, and all the very best.
I'd like to, first of all, thank you for all your time, because I know it's, some of these board meetings are pretty long. And I think um, having the student uh, point of view is extremely important. It keeps us, you know, grounded, it keeps us understanding what our mission is, and I think having your voice helps us to do that. And the, hopefully, the experience that you have here, you can take especially if you're going into government, and perhaps you can replace me in a couple of years, okay?
Well, Elijah, one of my neighbors, and uh, mainly, she's uh, one of the students from Burnett. I was her substitute teacher back then. Um, you know, I knew something special about you guys. I watched you guys grow and learn. Your dedication, you know, coming here during midterm week and finals week, I know it, you know, gonna get you guys so far. Um, I look forward for what the future holds, and we hope to see you guys come back. And best wishes, and have a great summer.
Uh, others have spoken about your um, student voice. Um, I like to commend you on your student questions. You have insightful questions that make us think, um, and they help us to look at how we are presenting, but also to dig a little bit deeper. So I've appreciated both of your questioning and critical thinking, and also being a model to your, to other students to come and serve um, in different capacities. So thank you both so much, and we'll look forward to seeing you next year.
Well, I echo what Mary Jude has said about all the questions that you bring to the table, especially when we're presenting about the budget. So the budget being so complex that I'm amazed how you follow uh, all the presentation and the things that we talk about, and that you can go back and ask questions and clarification because it gives us a point of view from the students, and rather than just the board members and the staff. So having a student point of view on that and questions, it makes us think on how can we do better next time because of all the questions that you ask us. So congratulations for accomplishing a full year, and so we look forward to seeing you more.
Ditto.
I think the other piece is you all have a full school day, and then you come here, and you come with that energy. Sometimes we don't have the energy that you have when you're here, and we appreciate that. Um, sometimes it's long, sometimes it's dry, but you stick it out. And as Mary Jude said, you ask those questions. That's really important, and you hold us accountable to making sure, as Superintendent Jordan said, it's all about the students. So thank you to both, all three of you. But thank you to you. Good luck to you, Elijah. See you next year.
Yeah, to watch you guys grow, to participate actively um, in the voting and providing your feedback, as, as all the the board members and the executive team have said, has been really powerful. Um, we know that this experience for you is going to take you so far in life because of the leadership experience. You always have us for a reference, um, as you write your college applications and those types of things. You make sure that you include this. Um, and then uh, we'll all be able there, we will all be there to support you for many, many years to come, because you are part of the MUSD family. So thank you again for your service.
Thank you, and that concludes this part of our recognitions. Scott, would you like to say anything to our? Okay. Yeah, you did it. Okay, uh, next I would like to welcome to the podium our uh, beginning July 1, our Director of Elementary Services, Dr. Jackie Voe Felbinger.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Jordan, and Executive Cabinet, and members of the Milpitas community. I'm honored to be here tonight and truly grateful for the opportunity to serve as the Director of Elementary Education. Having spent 25 years in education and the last 13 as the Principal of Maddos and Kirtner, I've had the privilege of working alongside incredible students, families, classified and teachers, who inspire me daily. The district has not only been my professional home, it's also where I was raised and educated as a student, from Kirtner and Spangler to Russell and MHS. I'm proud to continue serving a community that reflects both my personal journey and the values that guide me as an educator. I'm grateful to be joined by my family tonight, Jim, Chloe, and Brooke. Having experienced the full P-16 continuum as a parent has given me a broad and personal perspective on the work that we do. I'm also inspired by my parents, who came to this country as refugees from Vietnam. Their story, both heartbreaking, but a powerful example of the American dream, taught me resilience, hope, and a belief in the power of schools to transform lives. I look forward to supporting our elementary schools, joining LND, collaborating across departments, and ensuring our work stays focused on what matters most. The success and well-being of our students, their families, and supporting those who serve them each day. I'm excited for the work ahead, and I'm committed to serving MUSD with integrity and care. Thank you very much.
Still all live, too?
Yep. Okay.
This is your first time, if this is your first time to an MUSD board meeting, we always start with recognizing the great work of our students, uh, the staff, the teachers. Why? Because there are so many things going on out of the world that a lot of times you don't hear about the great things that are happening in public education. There's always something positive happening in the MUSD. There's always uh, an opportunity to uplift a student, a classified employee, a parent, a teacher, or an administrator. That is the way that we start all of our board meetings, so that we can recognize the hard work of this community and continue to believe in them in so many different ways. So we thank you for your participation in our proceedings. Let me continue with our board meeting. Superintendent Jordan?
Thank you. Uh, tonight I'd like to point out a few of the activities that have been occurring at our schools. And all of these opportunities provide our students with connections to community and to each other, which increases their uh, attendance and engagement at school, which is the number one success factor. If they're not in school, they can't learn. I'd like to point out here in this picture, we have uh, Mr. Vincent Tran from Rancho School. And his students are here as one of the winners of the Bop Ball Tournament that they held at Rancho. And because Mr. Tran takes uh, time to make sure that these students have this experience in addition to what he does in class, several of them have been opened up to the experience of engineering and robotics, which they may not have otherwise. I took a little bit of time and spoke with the young lady in the front. I don't remember exactly her name. I think it's Amara. But what was really uh stood out for me in talking with her was that she's in seventh grade, and she said, had it not been for this, she would not have ever engaged with these people who are standing around her. And she has found another group of friends who are excited about creative ways of thinking and innovating and problem-solving. And not only that, to couple with her desire now to go into the computer science world, she is also very much interested in theater and art. So when she finally gets her way over to either Milpitas High School or one of our other two or two high schools, she'll have the opportunity to pursue those pathways, either as an integrated pathway or separately. This is our average daily attendance since my last reporting at the last board meeting. This time, we actually ticked up by point oh seven. Here you see that we have a drop of about 11 in enrollment. And uh, not quite sure why yet. I've asked our data tech team to delve into that, but I suspect it has to do with coming towards the end of the year and students beginning to take off for the summer. Here I want to point out, these are our second-year teachers who are in what's called the induction program. In the state of California, you first get your preliminary credential, and then you have five years to complete about 180 units of self-study. And you also have to produce a video of yourself teaching, demonstrating that you have mastered all of the California standards for the teaching profession, given that um, your level of a second-year teacher. And not all school districts offer this programming. So other school districts, uh, people who come with the requirement to clear their credential, they have to pay out of pocket and pursue that either at a county office of ed or another institute of higher education. So I'm really proud of the work that our team, uh, led by Director of Learning and Development, Raquel Kusunoki, with support of the rest of the team, and also with HR, has made sure that we have a very robust uh, induction program, which attracts really highly qualified people who are excited about teaching kids. And so I wanted to point that out and wish them all congratulations. Here, uh, one of the things that we talk about is leadership and leadership experiences. In the top photo, you see myself and three of our trustees, uh, Clerk Jiang, Vice President Yip Shuan, and President Norwood, alongside some other uh, trustees and superintendents from our area. This is our third year going to Washington DC on an advocacy trip. And while we do advocate for the whole of education in California, this year around themes of uh increasing funding for special education services. Nationally, we're supposed to get about 40% of uh, our funding, but the federal government only pays approximately 10%, meaning that we contribute about 29 million of our budget towards education services that are supposed to be paid for by the federal government. So we advocated for full funding. We also advocated for the continuation of federal funds, which for us amount to about $5 million, which may not seem like much in our total budget of 175 million. However, that's targeting our support for our learners of low-income backgrounds, second-language learners, and also, as I pointed out, making sure that we have a means to continue to develop our teachers with professional development. And that, as we know, or if you're following the news, the federal government has indicated that they may be greatly reducing or doing away with those. So we also advocated for that. Personally, personally meaning Milpitas Unified School District, so far from Representative Ro Khanna, on our first trip there, three years ago, we were able to advocate for, and he in turn advocated on our behalf. And while we asked for uh, 1.5 million dollars, we received $500,000 to help support the cost of the MUSD Innovation Campus and specifically the traffic light. And this time, last year, we asked for $4 million, and we made it to appropriations, but then because of the change in the executive uh, seat of the presidency, everything was halted and we were asked to resubmit all of our letters of support, which amounts to about, I think I got 22 letters of support from different community members with the support of our board members, and also um, redoing the application. So right now at, in Congress, our bill or our appropriation for a $4 million to support the MUSD Innovation Campus is on the desks of our legislators. So I want to thank our governance team, because each one of them now, over these three years, has had the opportunity to join me uh, and President Norwood in advocating for the students and educators of MUSD. The second picture is a picture at the NJROTC Awards uh, last week, and it's an example of civic leadership. And I was really excited for Lieutenant for uh, Nando Cadence. She is the commanding officer of our NJROTC. And she was surprised with uh, an honor from uh, from the, I forgot what it's called. I will just say from the regional NJROTC. And then in the bottom left is Community Impact. We have here some learners in a third-grade classroom at Senate Elementary School, where they're learning how to go deep into math through inquiry and collaboration with each other. And they were given a map with uh a map of a route to San Francisco from a place uh, kind of near Milpitas. And they had to figure out how would they solve it. So first thing they needed to do was ask questions. So they spent the whole period asking different questions and coming up with different ways of solving the questions that they had established. And this doesn't come about without the practice of our educators in developing those inquiry, critical thinking skills, collaboration, and cooperation. And our own educators, and I see in the audience, our Vice President of MTA, Alicia. Uh, they have been spending all year learning about how to go deep into math for preschool through third grade, along with Principal of Kirtner, Mr. Slaven. So thank you to our educators who are delving into that alongside uh, Director Kusunoki. And then our MEO. Our Milpitas Elementary Olympics, as uh, President Norwood pointed out last Saturday morning, or two Saturday mornings ago, that while it began in, was it 1976? And took a 20-year hiatus. It's back and never to be let go. And this too, uh, really takes a whole team effort, and with Mr. Forstner really pushing behind the scenes, and Ms. Kusunoki working to get sponsorships. And then all of the work at the school sites, our 10 elementary schools, by the teachers who are doing PE, as well as paraprofessionals and coaches. This day happens and comes together, and this year, including PTA's in supporting the work. And I'm really excited about this video, because it's student-made. And I think it's better than the professional one that the county office of ed did two years ago.
When you Hello?
Can you help with this, Al, Mr. Forster?
This, this was not the recent one. That was two years ago.
Thanks, the team. Oh, so I gotta do that next time? Okay.
By the way, Superintendent, that's the video from two years ago. This video is from two years ago, not the student-made.
What did you say?
This is the video from two years ago that the county made. It says 2020, uh, 2023 at the top right, uh, left corner, if you read, read the video posting. It's a great video, but it's, it's the one from two years ago.
That will do it.
Thank you, Scott's support.
Okay, so you can compare it to the last one. What's that? Oh, sure, go ahead.
I don't know. What did I do?
Go ahead. Oh, he's got
I'm so, I'm sorry, there's uh, it's not gonna work right now.
Then that completes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Superintendent Jordan. This time, uh, we have uh, comments from the public. Members of the public may address the board on any subject that on tonight's agenda. However, visions of the Brown Act Government Code 549, 54 dot 2A and dot 3, reclude any action as an unenagized item. No responses required from the board or district staff, and no action can be taken. However, the board may instruct a superintendent to indentize the item for a future meeting. If you would like to address the board on any item on the agenda, or one that does not appear on the agenda, please join us via Zoom. Click on the raise your hand button, and you will be called upon in order. When it is your turn, please state your name, address, and if you have any students in the district, before making your public comment, you will have two minutes to make your Before making your public comment, you will have two minutes to make your public comment. Those wishing to speak to a specific agenda item will be called upon at the appropriate time. Thank you for your participation in our civic engagement. Scott, are there any online public comments?
Uh, nothing online right now.
Okay, so I have three public comments here. Let's start with LCDR Jim Arthur. There's a button. There's a button on there.
He's coming to us.
Lieutenant Commander Jim Arthur.
Thank you.
And I'm here to speak on behalf of the uh JROTC program and Lieutenant Jackson. I've heard that uh someone to take it the program in a new direction. Well, you can probably tell by my gray hair and my tattered Navy flight jacket that I've been around the block a few times. I've seen a lot of leaders and I've done a lot of leading myself. A lot of it's been years ago and much of it in combat. And uh most of the time, people I were I was leading were adults and experienced and well-trained. Lieutenant Jackson is dealing with young teenagers, men and women, who are not trained and have very little experience. Now, contrary to popular belief, the uh JROTC program is not a recruitment program for the military. It's a program to give life skills that can be used anywhere, not only in the military, but in other walks of life. And Lieutenant Jackson is very expert at doing that. Now, what she does, she takes, now in my case, my leadership, you know, I did did a lot during combat and it was pretty cut and dry, pretty cut and dry. But Lieutenant Jackson has to deal with a lot of other issues. Now she's uh what she does is she takes these cadets out of their comfort zone. You have to be taken out of your comfort zone to perform at your best. And pro athletes do that. They find out to seek out competition. And Lieutenant Jackson takes them out of the comfort zone, but she does it gradually in steps. And when I was young, I was yanked out of it abruptly. It was a big shock. But she puts them under, you know, a little bit of stress. Well, maybe she puts them a little more stress, but uh she gives them, she she does it gradually. She's a real pro at it. I couldn't do it. I would I would be doing what she does. I would be overwhelmed. And plus, uh, these kids are a lot more smarter than I am, so I don't know how it would work out. But she's also got their respect. She's earned their respect. And uh I don't see the need to take the program in a new direction. The current direction is just fine. If it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Thank you. Thank you, Lieutenant Commander. Yeah, Becky Shepperson.
Hi, uh, I'm Becky Shepperson. I have a student in TK at Randall. Um, and I'd like to speak again about what I spoke at the last board meeting, which is the reduction in budget and staff for Randall. I still understand the reasons, but I'd still like to advocate for that not to happen or to be as minimal as possible. Um, I've gone to all the meetings this year, the school site council, the ELAC. Somehow I ended up being PTA treasurer. That astounds me personally because I had a baby in July and I'm afraid of school authority. But I've been to all of them and the metrics that they were supposed to improve, they've improved. They've reduced the suspension rate. They've reduced the rate of chronic absenteeism. They've improved the scores for the English language learners. But we still have so much more to improve at because of the demographics we serve. We still have rates that could be improved upon. And a school in that situation, that seems like the worst school to take resources away from because we need to improve and we're already improving. If you keep giving us the resources we're given, we can get even better every year. And I can already see how well everyone is doing and how well they're continuing to improve. And yeah, I don't I don't think a school like this needs resources taken away. When I tell people, my husband's Egyptian, when I tell people who are from Egypt about the school, they get really excited. And part of it is the principals. I tell them about an issue I brought to the principals and they say, I didn't know principals listened to us like that. People like us. And they want to come here now. So, yeah. In my personal opinion, I don't think the school should have large reductions. Thank you.
Thank you. We have NJROTC staff. That's a group.
Good evening, members of the school board, staff, parents and fellow cadets. Last year at this time, you guys gave the NJROTC program another year. And this today, we'd like to tell you what we accomplish in that year. Uh, I'm Cadet Senior Chief Polywall, the Executive Officer of the program. This year in our NJROTC program has been one of growth, service and leadership. Our cadets have gone above and beyond, putting in over two thousand community service hours just this year and over five hundred unit service hours. We showed up, stayed engaged and made a real impact in the community, attending over a hundred events throughout the year. Academically and professionally, we focused on building smart foundations. Cadets learned how to set goals, manage their time effectively and use study strategies that set them up for success, both in and outside the classroom. All of these skills they'll be able to use even after their high school life. Through event planning and hands-on leadership experience, we sharpened our ability to lead with confidence and purpose. We also had the opportunity to hear from six guest speakers, getting insight into careers, service and life after high school. Finally, we had government leaders such as Supervisor of Santa Clara County Otto Lee and Congressman Ro Khanna come visit our program just to see how good it was doing. And perhaps most importantly, every single one of our graduating cadets, eleven out of eleven, now has a plan for life after graduation. Whether it's college, military service or joining the workforce, our cadets are prepared to take the next step. With one of our cadets, Cadet Chen L, even getting accepted and committing to the United States Military Academy at West Point, one of the most prestigious universities in the world. This year has been proof that with hard work, teamwork and good leadership, anything is possible. Thank you all for supporting us throughout this journey and we're proud of what we've accomplished and what's ahead. For our second comment, uh, tonight, I have the privilege of speaking on behalf of the NJROTC unit as we say farewell to someone who has been the cornerstone of our program, our Senior Naval Science Instructor, Lieutenant Margie Jackson. For years, she has poured her heart and soul into this program. She stayed late every single day, most days until six PM and many times even later, not because she had to and certainly not because she was being paid for it, but because she cared. She believed in us. She gave us her time without hesitation and without complaint. On weekends, she was right there with us, not just for major events, but for field trips and community service, always making sure we had the experiences that would help us grow. She showed up no matter the day or time, always putting cadets first. For almost five years, she led this program alone, doing a job meant for two, even three. That kind of responsibility is more than a job. It's a commitment and she never wavered. She supported every cadet whenever they needed her, whether it was helping with uniforms, schoolwork, leadership opportunities or simply being there to listen. She was a steady presence we could count on. She never focused on preparing us for the past. Her eyes were always on the future, helping us build the confidence, discipline and values we'll carry for the rest of our lives. She built strong, lasting relationships with community leaders that opened doors for our unit. And most importantly, she left a personal and lasting impact on each and every cadet. We know the next instructor will bring their own strengths and ideas, but what she built here is something we will continue to honor. No matter who steps into that role, we as a program are committed to keeping a strong, respectful and collaborative relationship with the school board because your support has helped us become the unit we are today. Lieutenant, we can't thank you enough. You are more than an instructor. You are a guide, a role model and our biggest supporter. Your legacy will live on in this program and in all of us. Thank you.
So Lieutenant, it has been quite a journey being in this program. And before I start off, I'd like to say thank you for mentoring me to a better version of myself. Um, without your guidance, I really don't know where I'd really be. Uh, as you can see, this program has really helped me a lot. At first, I really thought that you were a mean scary person, but that's a good thing because it was the mean scary person that I myself and the unit needed. Being in this program, like I said before, has really improved on me a lot. And I think you can see that with just those two eyes you have. But overall, Lieutenant, you are a wonderful mentor. Without these opportunities, these public, I guess, public speaking opportunities, any opportunities that you provided me, I would not be where I am today without your help. And I'd like to thank you for that.
Thank you. I don't I don't fifteen on our agenda, uh, MUSD strategic goals. Let's start with our student board rep.
Build a culture of we that engages parents, staff and community partners in supporting student success.
Improve communication systems for better outreach to parents, students and staff.
Develop educational pathways that allow students to apply their passion and learning for the future careers.
Focus services and support systems to ensure that all students are engaged in their learning and are making social, emotional and academic gains.
Identify creative, student-focused strategies to accommodate enrollment growth and ensure healthy learning environments.
Adam sixteen Superintendent's Executive Cabinet Report.
Thank you. We will start with Kirtner Elementary, Principal Slaven.
Good evening, everybody. Um, today for our um school report, we're going to be sharing with you about a service learning project that our fourth grade, fourth grade team did. And um I wanted to kind of show you first the Kirtner vision statement. Uh, we as a school and ILTV revisited this just to ensure that it still aligns with our practices at the school. And that last bit is kind of ties into this project that the fourth grade team did. And it talks about developing twenty-first century skills. We have limitless opportunities to achieve success and positively contribute to our community and the world. And it's that piece that we really embody at Kirtner and the fourth grade team's going to share more about. Uh, on the next slide, you'll see that this project does align with our MUSD strategic goals. Uh, building a cul- culture of we, developing educational pathways, focusing on service and supports and improving communication. And it details kind of how it ties in, but I'll have our fourth grade team share what they did for their service learning project. Uh, we have Natalie Tice, uh, Mary Peck and Naomi Patner.
Hi, everyone. Um, as Mr. Slaven said, I'm Natalie Tice, a fourth grade teacher at Kirtner Elementary, and I'm here with my teammates, uh, Mary Peck and Naomi Patner. Um, this year, the Kirtner fourth grade students participated in a three-month-long service learning project. The purpose of the project is to use what the kids learn in class and apply it to help others in our community. So for their project, the students brainstormed causes that they care about and chose a nonprofit to conduct research on. After completing their research, they wrote an informational writing piece about that nonprofit organization. After learning about what nonprofit organizations do to help the community, the students did their part as young community members and participated in different school-led community service events. The events that the students signed up for included a park cleanup, a school cleanup, creating cards and art kit for a local nonprofit, Child Advocates of Silicon Valley, and doing a snack fundraiser to raise money for the Humane Society of Silicon Valley. Some students even did their own community service outside of school. We have two students here today who are going to give a brief description of what they did.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kyle Huang. I am nine years old and I am a fourth grade student at Kirtner Elementary. For my service learning project, I went to um local senior centers to play the piano. The seniors really enjoyed the piano music and they would like clap and sing along with the music. I really enjoy like going to these senior centers and playing the piano. Thank you.
What was your favorite song to play on the piano?
One of my favorite songs to play on the piano are um, it's called Tarantella. It's like from the romantic period of piano and I really love the romantic period.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mariah La Conde. I'm a fourth grader at Kirtner Elementary. Today I'm here to speak about my community service project. For to um, for our project, we worked as a team to raise money for Humane Society, an organization to ensure animal welfare. Team is an acronym for Together Everyone Achieves More. To raise money as a team, we sold snacks such as chips, cookies and juice, each for one dollar to make them affordable. We learned to work together as a team and got opportunities to share our own ideas. We also learned planning, organization and problem solving through this entire process. And finally, we learned how joyful and rewarding it feels to give back to our community. Thank you.
Their project culminated to kind of a showcase and they had, uh, family members were able to come by uh, and they listened to their presentations and it was very, the vibe of it was just something amazing that the students had the opportunity to give back to the community. And I know that when in middle school, they had the opportunity to kind of um contribute community service hours for recognition and then in high school, it's a requirement. Uh, so to see that our elementary students are more than capable of doing the same thing that secondary students are, uh, it's uh very promising for our future. Thank you.
There any questions from the board?
Yeah, so I just want to make a comment. I I think it's great that fourth graders are introduced uh to especially nonprofits and the feeling of giving back uh to the community and making an impact to a community. So I commend uh all of you working together to learn about that and I hope you continue it. Thank you very much.
Any comments from the student board members?
I would like to commend your enthusiasm. So I'm sorry.
Okay, um, Dr. Naka, Dr. Naka.
Thank you. I would like to commend each of you uh for the enthusiasm that uh drove you to start something like this and think of something which you can take it to the next level as you grow and the board leadership, you know, for the nonprofits. It's like the sky is the limit or even beyond that, you can explore the opportunities to be able to collaborate with any other local organization. So I would love to see what is something in store for you all to be able to explore and uh you know, make a big difference in the community for us. And thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Principal.
Any other board members?
Just want to say I'm very impressed how young you guys are and doing the community hours. I used to drag my kids along and they didn't want to do it, but um you guys came to the meeting to share uh in this presentation. And uh I look forward to seeing what other community uh activities you guys will do in the future and come back and share with us. Thank you so much.
Executive Cabinet.
I don't remember the student's name, but I recall the board recognizing a student in middle school for um volunteer hours. And so I know that you're not doing this for recognition, but if you want, you can set goals for how many hours you want to contribute. And then when you get to middle school, perhaps she'll be recognized um for the board and from another organization for your service hours. Okay?
Actually, just a quick comment. Uh, you guys actually do qualify for the President's President's uh Award on Volunteering. So you can you can start now. There's no reason that you can't.
Um, what's the President's Award?
We'll um we went for that online.
Yeah, we'll take that off.
There's information about the Presidential Volunteer, easy to look up about the Presidential Volunteer Service Award. It's online.
I think it's also on our website, isn't it, Mr. Forsner?
I believe so. Um, it's Milpitas High School as well in their career in College Center.
Awesome. So yeah, we'll can, yeah, you've definitely inspired, um, us Curtner team with this presentation. And you'll hear there'll be more to come. Fantastic presentation by both of you. And thank you for your leadership and keep up the great work. And thank you, parents, for supporting your students as always. Um, we know that the research says parent engagement in, in education is extremely important for the student development, social, emotional, self-efficacy, and so many other reasons. So thank you again, parents, for your support of your student. Item sixteen, Superintendent's Executive Cabinet Report.
Assistant Superintendent of HR, Damon James.
So if you talk to, uh, HRs across the county, they'll tell you we're dealing with the same thing. So it's hiring and, um, complaint challenges. And so I'm happy to talk about something that's not connected. Um, I had the opportunity to attend the secondary reclassification ceremony last week and was just really, um, enamored with, um, the grace that the students had as they were accepting their awards. It was just really wonderful to see. And, you know, we were all at MEO, but, um, and so that was another opportunity to see why we're here. So even though we're dealing with trying to, um, fill positions and dealing with normal end of the year things, um, it's, it's always nice to, um, to spotlight the students and, and, and what, what we're all here for.
Executive Director of Inclusive Services for All Learners, Mary J. Dorfnyas.
Good evening. Yeah. Think it's going, is it going? Okay. Um, good evening. Yes, this is a very busy time as Assistant Superintendent James shared. Uh, we do have a lot of work that's closing for the end of the school year as well as preparing for the summer. Uh, this summer, we are expecting about 500 students at our summer school program, including our students who are participating in extended school year. Uh, Ryan Starks, Destiny Oaks, and Daisy Gonzalez are our leaders that will be overseeing the program this summer. Um, and we've actually started, uh, this work, um, kudos to the learning and development team who's been working on this, uh, since January to ensure that our, our neurodiverse students, um, are participating alongside of their neurotypical students and participating in the same projects and activities, um, with the support that they need. Uh, so we're very excited about what's coming, um, ahead this summer. And that concludes this evening's report for learning and development. Thank you.
And Chief Business Officer, Dorothy Raganosa.
I don't know how to follow Mary Jude now. So last Wednesday, we attended the School Services of California Budget Workshop where the governor's initial budget proposal for 2526 was presented. Highlights from this proposal will be included in our budget adoption presentation at the June 10 board meeting. Our preliminary audit began in March and has now entered into final phase, which is taking place concurrently with our close, with the closing of our books for the 2425 fiscal year. On June 18, our architect QKA, along with Black Construction, will host a lunch and learn session for the district office staff. This event will offer an exclusive preview of the exciting plans for Phase 3 construction and provide an opportunity for staff to ask questions and engage directly with the project team. Uh, lastly, I would like to express my heartfelt appreciation to our payroll and accounting teams. May is especially demanding long month, as Mary Jude said, full of tight deadlines and, um, that their dedication, I just want them to know that it does not go unnoticed. While the year isn't over yet, thank you for your continued hard work. Keep pushing forward. We got this team. That's my report for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item seventeen, Student Board Rep Representatives, uh, and Reports.
Okay, tonight we'll start with our MUSD Middle College High School Representative, Elijah Sandoval.
Okay, so for the last two weeks, our school was packed with events hosted and organized by our ASG. For the last week, we had a Spear Week of Decades Day, Anything But a Water Bottle, Vacation Wear, School Colors, and Culture Day. And along with the Spear Week, the Friday, we had a award ceremony in which each teacher gave around two, three words to students for growth, academic performance, and the positive impact in the class. Right after that, our school headed to Augustine Park to start a Family Fun Friday in which ASG organized three major school-wide games. Each grade was separated into teams with ASG collaborating with staff. And we started off with tug-of-war, Sharks in Menos, and Red Light, Green Light. Uh, the seniors won overall, but even if the students were out, they're able to gain points through cheering. And all the points are headed to the grade who gathered the most points throughout the year, which will lead up to a pizza party, uh, also organized by the ASG. Uh, the week before that, we also had a bake-off during the week in which students teamed up to make desserts. And they had a, like, it's like a golden brown brownie and a lot of cakes, and the winning group earned a gift card of their choice. And now the juniors are helping organize senior graduation, which takes place on June 12. And the seniors are still finalizing things like senior photos, gowns, and music, uh, for the walk-up choice as the day comes. Thank you.
Thank you, Elijah. And we'll move right along to our Milpitas High School Student Board Rep, Mei Chong.
Um, my dad has a piece of merch that I was going to show you guys. Do you want me to get it right now or after?
While she's, um, getting, um, that piece of merch, I'd, um, let the board know that we're going to bypass, uh, the board group agreements for the sake of time. And I also asked that, um, you keep your presentations or your updates to the board, uh, to under a minute, uh, because we did spend quite a bit of time and we do have staff here that needs to, um, uh, we want to get them out of here as soon as possible. So if you can limit your, um, comments or, uh, your, your reports, uh, to one minute or 90 seconds, that will be outstanding. Thank you.
Okay, um, okay. This, um, past Friday, we had our annual A A Market, which is, um, Asian American Association. And we had a record amount of vendors and participants to show up. Um, I saw an uptick in the number of bands, thrift pop-ups, and jewelry makers this year. So there's definitely a trend there. And then even though we have several festivals throughout the school year, um, the A A Market at the end of the year is definitely the biggest and most anticipated festival of the whole school year. So good job to them. And at school, we have new merch. It looks like this. Wait, oh my God, it's crooked. Wait. It says, um, Trojans, and it's based on another popular hoodie design that's out right now. And if you're interested in buying this, most of them were pre-ordered, but we're selling maybe like 20 odd so, um, at graduation. And we predict that they'll go out really fast, so grab them while you can at graduation. And then we, our ASB is holding Lemonade and Learn for people who are studying for their finals. They're, they can study at our school library and we'll provide lemonade for them while they study with their friends. And then the NJROTC is holding a summer camp that runs through July 21st to the 26th, from 11 to 2, at the Portable ROTC Building at MHS. People who are interested can sign up at tinyurl.com/345azuas. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, student board members, for your reports. Um, as I mentioned, we are going to bypass board group agreements. And we are going to go into board communication requests, starting with Trustee No.
Uh, thank you, Board President Norwood. I know there was a lot of tension with the Milpitas Elementary Olympics, but the, the thing that, uh, really was inspiring to see was the newcomer academy celebration and the secondary reclassification. Uh, those students, uh, at the newcomers spending their extra Saturdays, uh, putting the extra time and work to really, uh, get acclimated to the school, uh, the school, uh, process and, uh, also the community. And then the students who got reclassified, uh, amazing efforts to, to get there. A huge celebration to those students. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee No, uh, Trustee Dr. Naka.
I would like to highlight few of, uh, our celebrations. Of course, May is a huge month of our, um, students to be celebrated, uh, the Rancho Award Ceremony that I was there, and the multilingual celebration, which has always been very close to me because, uh, you know, the kids, when they speak more languages, I think they thrive better. Uh, and magic presentations, of course, uh, the students and, um, the mentors and mentees, they put in so much of time to be able to guide them. And, um, yeah, NJROTC had, uh, their presentations for, um, the year. And AAPI Heritage Honorees, uh, in our city, I think, uh, is commendable that they put in so many hours to give back to the community. And, uh, those are some of them. And also, last but not least, the neurodiversity event. Thank you, Mary Jude, for your attendance representing our district. And, uh, I really, uh, would like to commend all the efforts that everybody, uh, you know, together, uh, puts in to be able to uplift our, uh, students in MUSD. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Work, Kurt John.
Thank you, President. Uh, I'm gonna just give a huge shout out to the, uh, teams that went to Michigan State over the weekend uh, to, uh, participate in the Odyssey of the Mine World Finals, uh, Curtner, John. Uh, there's two teams from John Senate Elementary, uh, one team from Burnett, and one team sponsored by MCF. They all did really well and placed, um, in, uh, the top portion of each of the problem divisions. Uh, secondarily, I'd like to ask, uh, the superintendent to, uh, take, I'd like to explore the possibility of, uh, EL intensive immersion, uh, program for the summer as well as a, uh, study session, a little bit more on our MTSS process to understand our impacts from Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three interventions.
When you say EL intensive, is that like what we already are offering for the summer for our EL students?
I'm actually thinking of, uh, basically a whole-day immersion type of program where...
I believe we already do that. I'll ask for, we, um, ask for a description of what we're doing and put it in the weekend report.
Awesome. Thank you.
Vice President Yip Swan.
Yes, from the 23 events that I attended, I'm only going to highlight a few, which is, uh, reclassification ceremony and newcomer graduation, um, got to do the opening speech and hand out trophies at the very first youth cricket tournament with, uh, President Norwood. Also, um, the Memorial Day Ceremony at Veterans Plaza, again with President Norwood to remember those, um, and honor those who risked their lives to protect our country. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Yip Swan. And, uh, for board communication, I, I have a request. And that request is, um, for, um, the superintendent, um, to work with, um, possibly board members and the, uh, board members and PTA to, to look at how we can become, uh, a service learning, uh, district. Meaning that from TK all the way through our adults, how we can have everyone involved in some sort of service learning hours, uh, within, uh, with MLPIS Unified School District to, one, strengthen the community and also strengthen, uh, the local nonprofits, uh, that we have. Um, the, the idea stems from in part the presentation that we saw, uh, from the two young, from the children at Curtner about them being in fourth grade. Imagine if all of our students from TK through graduation or TK through, um, high school, uh, participated in service learning. I am aware at the middle school and the high school there is, but to incorporate it throughout the entire district, um, what that could possibly look like. I know that may take some time. Uh, but we, but we do recognize that service learning is really a way to grow our communities and leadership.
I'll take a look at what our board policy says because it may already incorporate that in there. We do have a board policy on service learning.
So that means that we may have some school sites that aren't executing that board policy. If we don't have information around that service learning component, or that's something that's not shared. So I understand, but we'll...
I'll take, I'll start there and see where, where we can go with it.
Awesome. Thank you. And then if it does work out accordingly, bring it, the idea to the board to discuss uh, about what that could look like on behalf of the district and what it could mean, uh, so that we can continue, uh, to produce, uh, the most powerful learners, uh, and create a world-class education. And that includes the board communication, uh, requests. Item 20, action items. Again, I want to be mindful of the time. So, uh, we want to look at where we have, uh, presentations or there is, um, or board members may have questions on any of the items on the action items. If there are no questions, we are going to look to move towards, um, uh, the vote and the approval, if that's possible. So the first item that we have, um, 20A, uh, Human Relations, a Doc Resolution 2025 dot four seven, provisional intern permit, special education in mild to moderate fourth through sixth grade. Is there anything associated with that that we need to discuss or we need to be aware of? Damon. I mean, this isn't Superintendent Jeff.
It's okay. Uh, just because this has come up in past board meetings over the years. So, um, particularly in special education, there is a need. And so there are various pathways to becoming a special education teacher, to receiving your preliminary credential. One is to be part of a internship program. So we have a, a partnership with the County Office of Education with their EPIC program. Um, however, in order to have a, um, internship through that program, you have to have had certain classes and also, um, performed well on tests. Um, so before they can do that, we have the ability to give what's called a provisional internship permit, which is based on units, um, taking undergraduate units as well as experience in the classrooms. So if people were past paraprofessionals or BITs or substitutes, they can use that. So this particular individual, um, Jade, is a current, uh, classified employee, um, who has now joined the EPIC program. And we're offering her the provisional internship permit, um, so that that gets her through her first year, um, in the program. And then the following year, she would be eligible if she meets all of the requirements to have a internship credential provided by the County Office of Education. If not, we can renew her PIP for another year. So just wanted to explain that.
Awesome. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion?
We have a motion, but Dr. Naka, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by board, by Vice President Yip Swan. Are those, any additional discussion?
Just a quick clarifying question. This is the first time this individual has come up for a request. I know there was questions before about multiple requests on an individual. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, with, uh, the discussion, um, any additional discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Seeing none? Uh, motion carries. Item B, Superintendent's Office, Resolution 2025 dot 45, declaring week of May 18 through 2018 through the 24th, 2025, as Classified School Employee Week.
Thank you. And, uh, Mr. Forsner has our video. For the month of May, we have been recognizing many, uh, of the positions for our team members. And at our last board meeting, we recognized our teachers and very excited for this evening to recognize our classified team members.
Resolution 2025 point 45, declaring the week of May 18 to 24, 2025, as Classified School Employee Week in Milpitas Unified School District. Whereas the education of our youth is imperative to our society, state, nation, and world, and...
Whereas classified employees in our school districts and community colleges are the backbone of our public education system, and...
Whereas the classified school employees of Milpitas Unified School District provide efficient and effective support and ancillary services that are essential ingredients to excellent teaching, sound administration, and high student achievement, and...
Whereas classified school employees are rarely in the spotlight, but are always central to the activities of our schools, serving with professionalism and dedication and setting a high standard for care and compassion, and...
Whereas many classified school employees...
Whereas many classified school employees serve as a pair of professionals, provide direct assistance. To certified staff in the classroom and give students the individual. Individual attention and support they need to successfully to succeed academically and.
Whereas other classified employees prefer vital clerical transportation, food service. Office support and many other functions that without which local school sites, district offices and county offices could not operate. And without which many students will not receive important educational and health-related services and.
Whereas even as our system of public education depends on classified employees to serve students and staff. They often work in challenging circumstances and with diverse diverse talents and true dedication. Continue to nurture our students and support their colleagues.
Now therefore be resolved that the Milpitas Unified School District do hereby honor the contributions. Of classified school employees to quality education in Milpitas and recognize the week of May eighteen. Twenty-four, twenty twenty-five as classified school employee week. In the opportunity to play, to pay homage to. To appreciate and to emphasize and the importance of these valued members of Milpitas Unified School District. Educational teams, especially during these unusual times. May this week serve as a reminder that every employee is needed to unite and embrace our community of Milpitas. Passed and adopted by the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education at a meeting held on. May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five by the following vote.
Thank you, Scott, for the video. Is there a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, any opposed, any abstaining, seeing none, motion carries. Item B I I adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dot fifty-one recognizing fentanyl awareness day. And the importance of continuing to educate our community on the dangers of fentanyl.
Thank you. And before we move into that, President of C S C A Chapter two eighty-one. Miss Sherri Ames reminded me that earlier this year, our C S C A team members were. Recorded and videotaped for the statewide C S C A and. Their video can be found on csca.com under training and the video completely features our team members.
So thank you for that. And you're referring to the the classified employee school employee week or fentanyl?
Sorry, classified school employee week.
Great. And Scott, I want to make sure that all of the classified employees get the opportunity to see the video that was produced. For the board meeting to adopt the resolution and as part of the board communication and strategic goal number two.
Thank you. And now we'll move into the fentanyl awareness week and. The board president, vice president, would you like to briefly describe what we learned at our city school collaborative?
Vice President Yip Swan.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What we learned at the at the city school awareness.
Yeah. Fire department came in and they spoke to us about the new drug out there. That is very lethal with a very, very small amount that is considered. Is it toxic?
Yep.
Yeah, and it's already here in Santa Clara County. So for us, we want to jump ahead and. Create awareness at our district. And we talked about having our leadership, our student leadership. Help us and get getting the words out. So yeah, it was very informative and. You know, our our district has been very vigil, very good about. Getting ahead of that. So with our student, with partnership with our students or the leadership. We want to do the same with this new type of drug that's coming into our county.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you for that, Vice President Yip Swan.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Forsner, our principal awareness resolution.
Resolution twenty twenty-five point fifty-one, recognizing April twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five as fentanyl awareness day and importance of continuing to educate our community on the dangers of fentanyl. Whereas April twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five is National Fentanyl Awareness Day, an opportunity to educate the community about the dangers of fentanyl and.
Whereas drug traffickers mass produce fake or counterfeit pills in an effort to falsely market them as legitimate prescription pills. Resulting in deceptions and threats to communities throughout the nation and locally and.
Whereas the Drug Enforcement Agency has observed a dramatic rise in the number of counterfeit pills containing at least two milligrams of fentanyl. Which is considered a deadly dose. And whereas six out of ten pills with fentanyl tested by the D E A contain a potentially lethal dose. In twenty twenty-two, D E A seized more than fifty point six million fake pills, often laced with fentanyl and.
Whereas in January and February, the California National Guard seized one thousand forty-five pounds and more than six hundred fifty thousand pills containing fentanyl. And nationwide, more than one hundred thirty-nine million deadly doses of fentanyl have already been seized in twenty twenty-five alone. And whereas fentanyl has also been detected in other drugs and many users unaware that they were actually taking fentanyl and.
Whereas among individuals aged fifteen to forty-four, drug overdoses accounted for twenty-eight percent of all deaths in twenty twenty-three. The fatal overdose rate in this age group increased from ninety-four to a hundred thousand in two thousand eighteen to a hundred twenty-seven in twenty twenty-three. With sixty-six percent of this increase due to the opioid-related overdoses. And whereas in Santa Clara County, there have been twenty-two documented deaths due to fentanyl since January twenty twenty-five to now. And whereas fake or counterfeit pills are easily accessible and often sold on social media and e-commerce platforms, making them available to teens and youth and.
Whereas the Milpitas Unified School District collaborates with staff, students and the community to address the dangers of fentanyl. And has supplied enough naloxone to all the school sites where administrators, health clerks and campus supervisors have been trained in case of a fentanyl emergency. And whereas the Milpitas Unified School District continues to ensure all school sites have access to. And training on life-saving opioid antagonist naloxone.
Now therefore be resolved that the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education do hereby adopt this resolution to recognize April twenty-ninth. As National Fentanyl Awareness Day and support the work all. And support the work at all levels to protect the well-being of youth and community. Passed and adopted by the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education at a meeting held on May twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-five via the following vote.
Your motion.
Motion to adopt resolution recognizing fentanyl awareness day.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
Yeah, just for clarification, what I heard was that we shouldn't be complacent around fentanyl. It's been in the community for years. We've been talking about this, however. Based on your city school collaborative meeting, fire department is highlighting the the higher risk because of the new variation of the drug, which we don't know as far as. The response, the the EpiPen or whatever they call it, could potentially could be effective against that. So hence the heightened awareness.
Right. And to build on that, the 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 new variation is called carfentanol. Here's the report. We'll make sure. I'll get this copy to the superintendent so that she can make sure all the all the other board members get a copy of that. And then the secondary. Leaders, one of the comments that was also made was that they are now lacing Adderall with fentanyl or carfentanol. So that's making it more addictive. Then so that those are the things that the fire department made us aware of at that presentation. So there's there's more work to be done. Definitely. So thank you for the additional discussion.
Thank you.
With that said, all those in favor, any opposed, any abstaining? Seeing none. Motion carries to adopt the resolution. Item A I I. The superintendent's report approved brownie approved boundary recommendations from Mattos and Zanker Elementary Schools.
So in the maps that Mr. Forsner will put on the screen for us. Right now, Mattos is reaching its full capacity. And if we don't make this boundary change, it will not be able to hold all of the incoming students. For the most part, there are not yet any residents at these locations attending Mattos. But for the few that are, we will make them legacy families so that they can continue to. Attend Mattos. Otherwise, new people who move in will attend Zanker. And so it's an area along Abel and. Down through Main Street, there's a segment of new housing there as you can see up on the screen. And then there's also the Sango Court Apartments, which are opening soon and those are high density. And definitely we would not be able to accommodate the numbers of students that will be generated from. That development at Mattos. So they will also go to Zanker.
Thank you. Is there, Scott, any public comments?
Oh, we have no public comment at this time.
There are no public comments this time. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a move to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
What's the enrollment in Mattos, Superintendent Jordan?
What was?
The total enrollment that we have because I I just heard it's reaching the total capacity, the enrollment.
So the discussion is includes the superintendent in terms of what is the maximum enrollment at Mattos?
The maximum enrollment at Mattos is just shy of seven hundred, but with. These residents coming in, it would put it close to eight hundred.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Yeah, just taking it toward down Abel, like you mentioned, the new construction of potential homes down that street. Zanker is actually closer to those homes anyways, so it makes more sense to to redefine those boundaries to Zanker.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, any opposed, any abstaining, seeing none, motion carries. Item, Board Member Four under. Superintendent's Office determine if board member absences meet the criteria for compensation under Board Bylaw ninety-two fifty.
So we had two trustees who missed either all or most of a board meeting in the last. Couple of board meetings. So for our board bylaw, this provides the opportunity for the board to. Determine if the reasons for trustee No and Clerk John's absences. Warrants excusal for the bylaw.
Hey, trustee No, trustee Nakka, excuse me, trustee No, trustee John, any comment regarding your absences?
Yeah, the May thirteenth, at the beginning, when we were approving the calendar for board meetings, I had the fact that I had a conflict because of my work conference. That I attend on May thirteenth. And because we have quorum, I didn't ask for the board to reschedule the board meeting because we wanted the district business to continue on normal schedule.
Awesome. Thank you.
And for me on April twenty-second, that was a personal timeout.
Awesome. Thank you. Due to the fact that I would like to build on that conversation, due to the fact that this board has had outstanding attendance. And we and we spend quite a bit of time outside the normal board meeting sessions, I'd like to make the recommendation to approve the absences. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
I think I have to abstain.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, any opposed, any abstaining?
Abstaining.
We have two abstaining, motion carries. Consent items. Consent items are considered and seen will be acted upon by the board in one motion. There is no discussion on these items prior to the motion unless. The members of the board, staff or public request have that specific item to be tabled or removed for discussion or correction. We did already at the very beginning of the meeting to pull item C I I I for consent. So what we're looking for is a motion to approve the consent items excluding item.
C I I.
C I I. Is there a motion?
So move.
We have a motion to approve the consent item excluding C I I. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, any opposed, any abstaining, seeing none, consent item. Excluding C I I is passed. Any comments to be made about item C I I?
Yes, please. Under item C I I, under item C, certificated summer school, I ask that you strike. Natalie Nose, Senate S D C T K K E S N teacher.
So from, repeat that one more time?
Sure. Item C, certificated summer session, strike Natalie Nose, Senate S D C T K K E S N.
Okay, so there is a motion to approve item C I I with the striking of.
Natalie Nose, N O C E, Senate S D C T K K E S N.
Natalie, what what Damon said?
I move.
We have a motion to approve and we have a second. Any additional discussions? Thank you, Damon, for that. All those in favor, any opposed, any abstaining, seeing none, motion carries. Data future board meetings, June tenth, tentative study sessions five P M, tentative closed session six P M, open session seven P M, hybrid on Zoom, YouTube. And at Randall and at Randall World Language School, thirteen hundred Epsom Drive. June twenty-third, special board meeting, closed session three P M at M U S D Innovation Campus, thirteen thirty-one East Calaveras Boulevard. June twenty-fourth, tentative study session five P M, tentative closed session six P M, open session seven P M. Hybrid on Zoom or YouTube and at Randall World Language School, thirteen hundred Epsom Drive. Any additional announcements or reminder? Before our next board meeting. On June ten. Seeing there are none, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. There are second. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, any opposed, any abstaining, seeing none, motion carries. We are now adjourned.